Welcome to the Lancaster City Council meeting. City Clerk?
City Councilmember, Agency Director, Authority members Hughes Leslie.
Present.
Molly.
Present.
Ann.
Present.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman Chris.
Present.
Mayor Chairman Paris.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. The invocation tonight is with Joan Willingham from First Church of Christ Scientist.
Let us bow our heads, Lord. We come here tonight to honor you, Lord of us all. We ask your blessing on the city council, on every member, on every employee here tonight, on our new Lancaster Chief of Police, Armelin, and the sheriffs that are in attendance as well. Lord, we ask that our hearts and minds be open to your wisdom, to your love, and we ask a blessing on every resident here in the city of Lancaster, every school, every student, every teacher, every patient, every healthcare provider, every employer, and every employee. Let us all be brothers and sisters, Lord, and we look to the finisher of our faith, Christ Jesus, and let us be more like him in all that we think and say and do. And we close our blessing and request for love and wisdom tonight, Lord, in his words, "For thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever." Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much.
Please place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's time, Marvin. Tonight is a great night. Tonight, we're going to honor Reserve Deputy Becky Derrick, who is 51 years in the department. Fifty-one years. Fifty-one years.
Rex, Ken, and Lauren, come help.
You know, let's go back 51 years. They didn't like women in the Reserve Department at all, did they?
No.
And they made them dress funny. They did, didn't they?
Yes.
You had to wear a dress.
Skirt.
And you had to wear boots. Who does that 50 years ago? It wasn't the style then. In spite of all of that pressure not to serve, she served. And she has put 30,000 hours?
Plus.
Plus. Volunteer for her community. Sometimes, I mean, being a deputy can be dangerous. Being a deputy can be not very, some people are not very thankful for what you do. But she did 30,000-plus hours. I don't know anybody, and I've met a lot of people that have served their community. I have met no one who has even compared to what you've done. And this is the first time you and I met. And what that means is she did it not for the aggrandizement, not for the recognition. She did it to serve. I am so honored. I am truly speechless for what you've done. And we should have given this to you a long time ago. This is a key to the city of Lancaster. It is not something we give out lightly. You are an example that everybody should pay attention to. If all of us did 1% of what you've done, this would be the most glorious city in the world. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Let's go back here.
Thank you, everybody. And one, two, three.
Paul, did you want to say something?
I just wanted to add that she is the longest-serving sworn person, female person, on the Sheriff's Department ever in history with 51 years. And her dedicated service to our community, to the city of Lancaster, Lancaster Station, goes beyond that. Just yesterday was her 51st year assigned to Lancaster Station. That's pretty impressive.
Well, I'm glad you changed your ways in regards to welcoming women into the department.
I can add that one great thing is that when she came out of the academy, she passed the academy like everyone else. But at the time, in 1973, women were not allowed to work patrol. And that's how far we've come in that time. So it's very instrumental. She made positive changes for women, for females, and for our department. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want you to know what you started, though. This morning, I walked into a meeting, and there's a bunch of people there. It's a management meeting. And they were all women. Not one man. You were the first in huge changes. Thank you. California Choice Energy Authority Consent Calendar. Anything to be removed?
No, sir.
Any speaker cards?
None.
Is there a motion and a second for approval of the California Choice Energy Authority Consent Calendar?
Can I ask that the motion on CC1 include an effective date of February 14, 2024, please?
Motion to adopt resolution CCEA 02-24, effective February 14.
Thank you.
Second.
Let's vote. And it's unanimous. Moving on to the consent calendar, we have to remove item number eight. Any speaker cards?
Now, what item?
Eight. You know, I mean, Ken, he owns all these, you know, he owns half the town, and so he can't.
We're on successor agency, CC1 and CC2.
Oh, I did skip an agency. Moving on to the successor. So we've already done that consent calendar, right?
Yes.
We've got a motion.
No.
We get a motion?
No speaker cards. Waive the report. Motion to adopt resolution number SA 02-24 and SA CC2, which is resolution number SA 0124.
I'll second that motion.
Let's vote. And it's unanimous. Now you need to recuse yourself on the consent calendar, item eight. No speaker cards?
No speaker cards.
Is there a motion for the remainder of the calendar?
Motion to accept the consent calendar pulling CC8 as currently comprised.
Is there a second?
Second that.
Let's vote. And it passes unanimously. Now.
I will read CC8.
CC8, correct.
No speaker cards. Motion to accept CC8.
Second.
Let's vote. And it's unanimous.
With Councilmember Ma'am recusing himself due to ownership of property proximate to the project.
Not to be pedantic, but if he's recused himself and not here, it was unanimous, right?
Right, but I needed to note for the record the reason for the recusal.
Oh, I see. Okay. Thank you. New business item one. Ah, this is a great event. Proposed Eldorado Park renaming to Samaritan's Purse Park. Any speaker cards?
We have three.
Okay, who's doing the presentation?
Sure, I'll start with a presentation about the background of Samaritan's Purse, and then Sonia's going to talk about the process we got here to naming a park and the park naming process. If we can run the slides. So if you recall, it feels like a decade ago, but only three short years ago, we were in the battles and throes of COVID. We were getting reports that the hospital was overwhelmed, lacking oxygen, lacking beds, not as a result of anything that they did, but just as a result of the volume of COVID cases that we were facing. This, of course, was one of our major efforts as a city, but also as a community. And in late December, Pastor Paul, with the support of Mayor Paris, contacted Franklin Graham of the Samaritan's Purse. And I know, Mayor, you're far more closer to this. You can jump in when you want.
To clarify, it was on Christmas Eve, Christmas Eve, in the middle of the night, we contacted them. Because, actually, Pastor Chappell contacted them, and that's when the phone calls started.
Shortly, January 4th, the Samaritan's Purse visited the site at AV Medical Center.
You're right, I'm sorry, it was New Year's Eve. Christmas Eve is when we called the White House, yeah.
So the short turnaround time, I guess, is the key there. In three days, we turned it not only from a need to an action plan, which the group of people, as you can see in there, sat down and figured out, how are we going to build a field hospital in a short period of time? On January 11th, now this is six days following that, boots were on the ground, we had citizens involved, Lancaster Baptist Church was a huge advocate, we had the Plant 42, we're unloading their planes and pulling those off of planes at Plant 42, major operation. And January 11th, we started beginning building the hospital. In five days, five short days, in partnership with the hospital, we had a 54-bed outdoor hospital opened up for service. This was a full operational hospital. It wasn't necessarily taking the greatest number, the greatest acuity of patients, but they were serving patients that were on the down slope with oxygen, with all the medication that was necessary, and just a superb effort. And it was phenomenal to be part of and fun to watch. And we can look back fondly on it. At that time, it was a little scary times. So in 31 days operational, it saw 167 patients, treated 96, medical professionals were engaged. These were volunteer medical professionals provided by Samaritan's Purse, 55 disaster response specialists, dozens of healthcare professionals from the Allen Valley Hospital and all over the place, and hundreds of lives were saved. Not only the people that were in those facilities were saved, but the people that were in the hospital were saved as a result of the overcrowding and some of the challenges we faced. So as we look back, it was obviously a very challenging time. As I mentioned, it feels like it was a decade ago as I was preparing and thinking about this. But nonetheless, it's a very challenging time for our community, and our community stepped up in a big way. The city council stepped up in a big way, the hospital stepped up in a big way to make sure that we saved our community. So it was a challenging time, but as we look back now, a very special time with people serving people, which was fantastic. Now I'm going to turn it over to Sonia to talk about the park naming process and how we got here to recommend to you a naming of the park. So with that, I'll turn it to Sonia.
Thank you, Jason. As required, as part of the facility naming process, on December 1st, we received an application to rename Eldorado Park to Samaritan's Purse Park. Upon review of the application, it was determined that application meets the criteria of exceptional contributions to the city or demonstrated commitment to public service as outlined in the city's administration policies and procedures for facility naming. As required by this policy, the city published a notice of intent to rename the park in the Allen Valley Press Newspaper on December 12th and December 19th. The notice invited public comment on the proposed name, as well as the option to propose an alternative name. Those public comments were due by January 11th. We received no community input nor alternative name proposals by the deadline. Given that there's no community objections to the proposed facility name, as well as Jason's, as Jason outlined, Samaritan's Purse's critical contribution to our community, staff is proposing to approve the application to rename Eldorado Park to Samaritan's Purse Park. And if approved, the name would be dedicated in conjunction with the groundbreaking for the park renovation project, which is slated for March. And that concludes the process.
Any questions? Thank you. Just so that the public comment is all-inclusive, in case there is any, this is the, you know, what do you call it? It's the symbol for Samaritan's Purse. It's the Good Samaritan. It's our intention to have a life-size one of these placed in the park. Or at least it's my intention. I guess it's not your intention yet because you haven't voted on it. But when you have any comments, now would be the time, if you have any. I'm aware of the possible controversy that this might present, and, you know, we'll have the discussion. I have every intention of doing it if the council supports it. The fact of the matter is, is they treated 167 patients. At least that many would have probably died had they not been there. The hospital was at absolute capacity. There was not one hallway they could put people. And people were seriously ill. And they came in at rapid speed. It was amazing. You don't see inside those tents. It was really a hospital. It was like an emergency room. You know, they had real hospital beds. They had, it was just the walls were different, you know? And all of those medical professionals were volunteers from all over the country that came to serve. And they served us until we didn't need them anymore. It was, it would have been a much more tragic story of an already tragic story had they not come. And they answered the call, and they didn't, it was absolutely free. Not one dime did they expect. Nothing in return. It was given to us. If anybody deserves a park, it is them. And I am extremely proud to be on the council that honors them for what they did. The actual putting up the tents was done by Lancaster Baptist Church with volunteers. They, you saw me out there working with them. I was, after an hour, I was done. I had never swung a sledgehammer before. It was quite an interesting experience. They worked day and night till it was up. It was the most amazing thing to be part of. Of all the experiences I've had in life, that is one I will remember and cherish forever. Jason was out there swinging a hammer. We were, it was a community effort to save people's lives, and we successfully were able to do that. With that, Rick Houck?
Thank you for the opportunity. I just want to say that I'm very much for this, and a couple reasons. First, it is a reminder of the compassion and the goodness of Samaritan Purse, but also the citizens of our city. I love the fact that we have in God we trust, and I think that is commendable, and I think it's represented here by the kindness and the goodness that was shared and was given during that time. Secondly, we live in a world where we see so much violence and anger and negativity. This, to me, is a positive thing. I mean, you walk in there, and somebody might ask, what is Samaritan Purse? What does Samaritan mean? Well, it really was the parable that Jesus gave that taught us to care for others. And he certainly gave that parable. And of course, the one who gave the Samaritan, the Good Samaritan, he was hated by the ones that he cared for. So, and then, of course, finally, just the fact that Samaritan Purse came to our aid when our city and our valley needed help, and they gave selflessly, from putting up the tents, to setting it up, to caring for the patients. And I think it's deserving that we honor that memory for future generations. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Troy and Randy Ramirez.
Thank you, Mayor, and City Council, for this opportunity to speak. I just wanted to voice my support for the renaming of this park to the Samaritan's Purse Park. And as many of you know, as it was presented just a few moments ago, they came to our city during a very difficult and dire situation, and they showed great compassion and care for our city. And because of the work that they did, we see patients that were treated, and many of them that are alive today because of the work that they did throughout that time. And so I think it's a wonderful tribute to this great organization. I also believe that it'll be a wonderful reminder that we ought to live with compassion and that we ought to care for one another as a fellow residents here in the city of Lancaster. This is my friend Randy. He is one of the patients that were treated under the tent there with Samaritan's Purse.
Hello. Thank you very much. Mayor, when you were speaking about the tents and the crowdedness and all that, I got to see it firsthand. The first week of January 2021, I got the COVID. They took me to the hospital, and all I remember them saying is how low my oxygen level was. I passed out. When I woke up, I woke up in the basement, the overflow, and I'm looking at some of the rusted pipes. You know, they had me near where the station was with the nurses because of my heart, and the person across from me had passed. So they were taking them out, and they brought somebody else. They passed. They had a curtain on the side of me. I could kind of hear people, but I couldn't really see it. So then I stood there most of that night till the next day, and then they came, they said, we're going to move you out. As they pulled the curtains, it's when I realized it was a big, like, hallway, and there was beds on each side. As they were pushing my bed, I was bumping the beds of both sides. Most of the people had passed, and there were some that still were barely clinging on to life. My heart was broken. It just, as they pushed me to the first floor, they had to put me in the hallway because there was no room. And as the days went on, because I, it was a total of two weeks there, but I slowly went to the third floor, I mean, yes, the third floor. They treated me with medication, everything they could. I got plasma, you name it. And then at that point, they told me, and there was people, the two people died behind me. I stopped counting the code blues after 29, because it was just for these people. I would just say prayers for them, but it was so many people that were dying that it was so overcrowded. They came and finally took me to the fourth floor, and they put me like in a janitor's closet. They took everything out, they put a bed in there, and then that's when they, same day they came and said, we're going to take you to the tents. Well, I wasn't, I wasn't aware of what was going on outside. And at that point, I was kind of scared because they were mentioning about the lack, that I wasn't going to be able to receive any more medicine that they were giving me. They'd have to treat me differently now. And I was still pretty sick. So they took me in the evening, it was cold, on the side of the hospital. They didn't even take me through the hospital, and they took me to the tents. At first, when I first went in there, I was a little scared because I thought they brought me here to die, you know? And there was a couple people in there because I was on the last tent, on the last bed next to the doctor and the nurses' station there. And they right away started treating me, and it was warm in there. They had heaters. You know, it was, I was like, you know, okay, that's not bad. And they treated me, oh, they had to keep me hooked up because of my heart, everything. And they treated me for several days after that. And, I mean, after seeing so many people that passed, you know, I didn't know, I didn't even know how to feel anymore. But going in there, then the other two guys were telling me how they got there like four or five days prior, and they were feeling better, somewhere even getting up to walk. It gave me hope. And I appreciate everything that they did for me. I was one of the first people to leave the tents. So they had a camera crew and everybody outside. Cake, but they never gave me none. I saw the cake, but I was like, they won't let me have any. But I was able to go home, and I fully, you know, recovered after that. But I appreciate so much what they did, and I, I'm pretty sure, as you mentioned with the numbers there, they saved a lot of lives because there was a lot that did pass because we didn't have it at the time. So, sorry.
Thank you. I'm glad you made it.
Thank you, Swatch.
Before I call up the next speaker, it was his father that made this happen. It was Pastor Paul Chappell who called me on New Year's Eve, and come to think of it, he wasn't out partying, was he? That was a joke, Pastor. Never mind. But he called me New Year's Eve, and he says, you know, I'm friends with Franklin Graham. Franklin Graham is Billy Graham's son. For those of you as old as me, can remember who Billy Graham was. And he said, you want me to call him? And, you know, please call him. We're literally, we're beside ourselves, you know? We've done everything we could do to save people, and they were still dying like flies, you know? What goes the truth of it? And the next day, things started to fall into place. And then Franklin Graham came out and inspected it, you know, before we went into operation. He inspected it himself to make certain that it was perfect. It was the most amazing experience. The, there's a reason that's on that wall, because when this happened, we were not alone, and there were so many cities that were. It was Christmas Eve that Donald Trump's White House sent us a FEMA team of 34 doctors and nurses. Had those doctors and nurses not arrived, it would have been a much more tragic story. it would have been a much more tragic story. If you'll remember, nurses were being hired away at a, at a phenomenal rate. They were paying them $1,000 a day. Hospitals wherever they could get them. It was a, it was a time of, of great panic. There were only two FEMA teams sent to California. And Lancaster was one of them. And I don't care what anybody has to say about Donald Trump. I understand the arguments. But on that day, he saved us. And I will never forget it for one. Two cities in the whole state got those FEMA teams. And we were one of them. And now that this crisis has passed, I don't want anybody to forget who was there for us. And I think they were there for us because we're not ashamed of our faith. And we shout out our faith. And look what happened. It, it, it was just one blessing after the next. And Larry, if you want to close this, it would be fitting.
Mayor Paris and City Council, thank you for the opportunity. Uh, it's an honor to be here to speak on this topic. I brought my daughter Leighton here as well. Leighton, raise your hand. She's 11 years old, first city council meeting. I told her it could be more exciting than church, but no promises. I, uh, as a kid, I remember playing at Eldorado Park. They had the biggest slide in the entire valley. We loved, all the kids knew where Eldorado Park was and is. It was closest to our house, so some great memories there. When my dad mentioned earlier this week, there was consideration about renaming Eldorado Park to Samaritan's Purse Park. I knew that I wanted to be here to lend my support and, and voice to this agenda item. And, you know, hindsight's 2020. There's certainly things that maybe we would all do differently throughout COVID. But if we look back, much of 2020, 2021 is a blur even in my mind. But the moments you spoke of a moment ago, Mayor Paris, uh, related to New Year's, New Year's Eve, Christmas Eve, I remember those moments very clearly. And I remember my dad, I remember where I was and where I was looking, the direction facing out the window in the conversation he was having. Please be in prayer for members of our church family that are in the hospital, members like Randy. And so we were, we were in prayer. And it was, it was desperate. And I remember my dad saying, Larry, do you think I should call Franklin Graham? And he did have a friendship with him, but it was very new, actually. And that's where I think, again, I point to the providence of God. It was only a few months earlier that their paths had crossed and forged this friendship at just the right time. And I remember him calling me back and saying that he had talked with Franklin and he had talked with you, Rex. And I see God's hand in all of that because lives were saved. They came. And it's a moment that I will never forget to stand there to see how they unloaded, the quality, the excellence, uh, how they came without any, uh, they came and they served with humility. There was no agenda. They worked so seamlessly with our wonderful frontline workers at our hospital. It's just something that I'll never forget. I'll never forget how they stacked equipments in their trucks and the quality that they did and how they cheered for every patient that exited that tent. And so for the kids that'll continue to go to this park, to them, it may just be a name. But I love the idea of a teaching tool like this, uh, to take a story like this that matters, uh, a story, yes, from scripture that shows unlikely hope, support, compassion from someone who is hated by society, uh, and yet compassion and hope. And then, uh, how we saw that play out in our community in a very real way. I think it's a great opportunity to teach future generations how to be a good neighbor, how to care, how to give support. And so I'm, I'm proud to have been a part. I'm proud that we are far removed from those days, but I don't want to forget them. Thank you, Mayor Paris.
Thank you. We, uh, remember those times? I mean, we had no idea what we were doing. We'd never faced something like this before. We certainly made mistakes. I think we were, you know, we were probably more restrictive than we needed to be. But, you know, we're taking information from Washington. I, I know I should have known better. They, you know, but we got through it. And we got through it with a, with a very low mortality rate, meaning fewer people died in Lancaster than in other cities in LA County. And it was because we all came together. And we came together in ways that I never thought could happen. You know, we, we were ready to open the tents. We couldn't turn the oxygen on because in order to turn the oxygen on, we had to turn it off. That meant 132 people would die. You know, so we're all ready to go, no oxygen. 24 hours later, city staff hooked up a truck from NASA who donated the, the oxygen in a liquid oxygen tank, you know, that they use for space stuff, you know? It was an amazing turnaround. Uh, and it could not have happened except for everybody working towards a common goal. Uh, it was, if I, if I never have another experience as mayor, this was worth it. It was, it was, it was, we saw what people could do in this community. And it was valleywide, all the way to Edwards Air Force Base, NASA. I mean, it was, it was incredible. If we were to continue to work like that together, we wouldn't have problems. I, I honestly think that. With that, I rarely make motions. But in this case, I am honored to make the motion to adopt Resolution Number 24 hyphen zero one, approving the renaming of Eldorado Park to Samaritan's Purse Park.
I'll second that motion.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. And you should know that without your grandfather, lots of people would have died who didn't. He was truly a hero. Thank you. Okay, NB two? If we could hear the staff report? Becky, would you come join us? Yes, we'd like you to join us.
Mr. Mayor, I had her sitting here because she actually is also a captain for the reserve. So she was the captain for the night, sitting here.
You mean, we got three captains now?
Yes, we do, sir.
I was wondering when you were going to tell the truth. Because I believe she was a captain before you.
Yes, sir.
Look at the humility. I mean, she didn't correct me, she didn't, you know? I, I, okay. Uh, yeah, where are we? Staff report.
Mayor, Council, good evening. Um, based on the conceptual plans prepared by Odell Architects and our Parks Department, qualifications and proposals for architectural and engineering design services was released by Public Works for the conversion of the former Jet Hocks baseball stadium to the city's new soccer stadium. NBBJ LP is a highly qualified architectural firm out of Los Angeles with recent relevant experience, including the conversion of an old airfield into an expansive destination for sports, wellness, community health, and activity that is the Orange County Great Park. The sports park within the Great Park hosts the Orange County SC, which are members of the USL Championship League. Under this contract, NBBJ will provide final design and construction documents for Phase One of the soccer stadium renovation, including field conversion, realignment of the West and South seating areas, construction of the new East and new North seating areas, as well as associated relocation of utilities to make room for the seating areas and field drainage improvements. Could we go back one? Oh, oh, okay, sorry. The design schedule has been compressed and accelerated to ensure construction may be completed and re occupancy may occur prior to the first game in March of 2025. And did we have some folks that wanted to come up or? Okay. Um, and with that, if you have any questions on the contract itself, I can answer those.
Wait a minute. We, we end with a black and white slide?
Sorry.
Thank you. Okay. Any questions? I'd like to comment. And, you know, when, when, what is it? Triple A, double A, single A, whatever? When that whole farm team system went away, cities across the nation were stuck with stadiums, right? I think we were the first, if not the only one, at this, at this point, to look at that as an opportunity, not as a problem. You know, and as things normally happen, you know, when there, when there's a space, nature hates a vacuum, I guess. And now a new league, a brand new league, think of the, the courage it takes to do that. They don't know if this league is going to work. We think it's going to work. But they jumped in. I think we're going to have an incredibly successful soccer professional team. And we're going to be the beginning of it, if not the center of it. Uh, I'm excited about this. Thank you for coming to Lancaster. And thank you, staff, for having the courage, the, the foresight, and, you know, just the initiative to say, hey, wow, let's turn this into something better. And truly, it will be better. And certainly, the attendance is going to be much higher because everybody I know, I think everybody I know, has played soccer, except for me and Marvin, of course, because they didn't have soccer back then.
Football.
Ken.
Football.
Ken, he played cricket. He played cricket? I should have known. So let's start on the speakers. Sandra Avery?
Good evening, good evening, Mayor, Councilmen, staff, community. Um, I'm here and I just wanted to, I just wanted to come and thank you all for your vision and support for our pro soccer team. Um, it's my absolute pleasure to get to meet John Panchito and their supporters. Um, their enthusiasm, their courage, their vision, you just can't help but be excited. And they're my newest friends. And every time they come in, there's, it's just, it's just amazing to be able to speak with them and talk with them. So I'm here tonight to just let you know that I am so thankful for the opportunities that they are going to bring to the Antelope Valley. I'm just so excited. And I just wanted to thank you for your vision and support. And I can't wait to be a loyal fan. Thank you.
Thank you. Trevor? Well, he's a fan.
Thank you for this opportunity, Mr. Mayor, um, and to my fellow community. We heard about COVID and the devastation that it wrought and the good that came out of it and the bringing together of the community. This soccer team and this stadium is yet another opportunity to bring together the community in a way that would be impossible otherwise. Speaking as somebody who knows a little bit about marketing, soccer never took hold in the United States initially because you can't have a game on television that doesn't have a break until the 45-minute mark. With COVID, a lot of us started live streaming. And we said, well, why are we watching commercial television? And with that, you saw the scope of television change. Now we don't have soap operas in the middle of the day. We've got premiership soccer on the major networks. Because no longer supported by commercials, it's supported by subscribers. And that just shows the intention and the attention to this particular sport. We spoke about how so many members inside and outside the community came together to bring us out of COVID and to lend the support that was needed at that time. Likewise, John and the USL and this organization are coming to do what we do so well in Lancaster, to be the innovators, to be on the precipice of a rebirth of a professional sport that never really got the opportunity to thrive here in the United States the way that it has, literally, to make it the most popular sport in the world. And like so many other great things, like the innovation that's taking place with our transportation systems, like the solar, like what's taking place and the direction that we're going with hydrogen, yet again, Lancaster will be the place that starts it all, that the rest of the nation looks to for direction. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I've wondered for 20 years why soccer was popular everywhere but the U.S. Now I know the answer. Thank you. Sarah Mitchell?
Hi.
Hi.
I appreciate the opportunity to speak today. I was born and raised here in the Antelope Valley. And I grew up playing at Palmdale Thunder. And I played at Lancaster High School when we were making our CIF runs. And I went on to play at Eastern Oregon University. And I've lived in a few places since I've left. And the more I move around, all, all around the country and the more I travel, the more I realize how much talent we truly do have coming out of the Antelope Valley with soccer and, you know, a lot of other things. But specifically soccer, since I grew up playing. And a lot of the times, I've kind of seen that we haven't had as much opportunity in soccer as, you know, we kind of get outshined by being a small city next to LA. A lot of the recruiters and eyes are on LA when it comes to getting to that next level. And growing up playing club here, a lot of players would drive to LA to get to that next level and to get that opportunity to be seen. So bringing this team here, now we're bringing the opportunity to our own city. And we're bringing the eyes to our own city. And it's going to give all this talent that we have a place to go instead of having to drive to LA two to five times a week and dumping all this extra money and time into it, which most of the time just isn't very realistic. When I was playing at Lancaster and we were making our CIF runs, before every game, we would get a scouting report on the other team. And we'd hear about all the D1s and D2s that all their players were committed to. Then we'd look around and none of us were really committed anywhere. And then we'd go and play these teams. And we were just as good, if not better, than all them. And we were beating all these top seeded teams. And all of us were, we were just like, yeah, I don't really know what I'm going to do after this. So bringing this team is going to be a really good opportunity for us to grow in our own city and develop our soccer community here. I lived in Tampa, Florida for a year and a half. And one thing that I took away from living there is that everybody in the city, whenever their teams are playing, you know, they're talking about it for days before and days after, and they're so excited. And I could definitely see with the soccer community being so big here, I could see it becoming that kind of environment and dynamic in this city and getting everybody excited and have something to talk about and look forward to and have the kids have their players that they look up to and want to be like in the future. So, you know, growing up back here, it's, um, really exciting and unreal to see this team coming to our city and bringing all this opportunity to our own city as well. Thank you.
Thank you. John Smelster? Oh, John, let me have you last.
Okay.
Okay. Andrea Perez?
Hello.
Hi.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Andrea Perez, and I am a member of the 661 Supporters Group for USL Antelope Valley. It is my pleasure to share my excitement about a professional soccer team coming to the Antelope Valley. Growing up, soccer played an important role in my life. Soccer taught me responsibility, dedication, and teamwork. It provided me with a positive outlet, a supportive community, positive role models, and, most importantly, a purpose. USL Antelope Valley is going to provide this community with so many opportunities. Just like many other children, growing up, I dreamed of playing soccer as a career. However, I never asked to play on a team beyond AYSO due to my family's finances. USL Antelope Valley will provide our talent with the support they need to flourish without financial burdens. It will provide our community with something that I couldn't have imagined or even dreamed of as a kid. This team is something that will bring pride and unity to our community, and I cannot wait to see this program develop into the vision we all know it is capable of becoming. Thank you.
Mr. Ortiz, normally, they clap after you speak, not before. I'm anxious to hear this.
Hello. Ladies and gentlemen of the City Council, good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to speak before you. My name is William Ortiz, and I come before you as a United States Marine Corps veteran, a dedicated fifth-grade teacher, a sports photographer, and a passionate advocate for soccer in the DAV community. I am also the founder of the 661, a supporters group for our upcoming professional soccer team, and standing behind me are some of my friends and founding members of the 661. My background in the Marine Corps has ingrained in me a deep sense of community and teamwork, values that align deeply, perfectly with the spirit of soccer. As an educator, I witness daily the transformative power of sports on young minds, teaching invaluable life skills such as teamwork, leadership, and resilience. Through my sports photography business, I have intimately captured the vibrant soccer culture within the DAV at the local parks, high schools, and the U.S. Soccer Complex in Lancaster, in where thousands of children play every week and participate in tournaments locally and away. Additionally, I have captured essential matches all over the U.S. and in Central America. I have been blessed to be able to capture professional and international competitions. This experience has shown me our community's immense passion for the sport, and I am confident that introducing a professional team will only elevate this enthusiasm to new heights. Establishing a professional soccer team in the DAV is not just an exciting addition to our local sports scene, it is critical investment in our community's future. The economic benefits are clear, from boosting local businesses to generating new employment opportunities. More importantly, it represents a significant investment in our youth. Creating a U.S. Academy here promises to open up new pathways for our young athletes, offering them unparalleled opportunities to pursue careers in professional soccer or Division One NCAA soccer. In other words, it gives our children a reason to aspire for success, not just in the fields but in our communities. I have seen how the team's announcement has given our community pride to claim that we live in the DAV. The future of our community can now see their dreams become a reality. No more driving down four to five hours daily to give a student athlete a chance to be seen by college recruiters and scouts, getting the proper training and competing with the best clubs in the U.S. Those clubs will now be required to come here to the DAV and play our future academy players. As the founder of the 661, I am committed to rallying community support and spirit of our team. This initiative is about more than just soccer. It's about community development, economic growth, and nurturing the dreams of our young athletes. Let's embrace this opportunity to enrich the DAV community, unite under the banner of sport, and invest in the bright futures of our youth. Thank you for your time.
And now, the guy who made it come together, got the money, talked the city into it, developed the league. John Smelster.
Thank you, Mayor Paris and members of the City Council. I'm glad that our friends got to speak, because that's really what this was about, and thank you, you know, Trolleys, for suggesting that I bring some folks along. This has just been an extraordinary experience for me. I'm a 30-year veteran of the professional sports industry and a lifelong passionate soccer fan, and the true story is, every time I would drive by the empty stadium, I would say to my wife, I want to put a soccer team in there. And after about the fourth or fifth time, she said, well, quit talking about it and do it. And that's when I reached out to Sonia, and that was only 13 months ago. So, it's just been an amazing experience working with your staff, the professionalism, the hard work, and from day one, it's always been about not just the city of Lancaster, but the entire Antelope Valley. And we, you know, we've committed to name the team Antelope Valley. We're going to unveil our formal name and logo and colors probably in April. So, right now, we're working under USLAV. But just such an honor to be here. It's been such a great experience. I'm so happy for the community, and, you know, I think it's going to turn out great. Thank you.
John, you choked me up. You know, before we vote, this is not without controversy. You know, we're in the middle of an election. There are people who have already come out against it. It would be very easy for this council to just wait till after the election, but you're not. You know, this is the right thing to do. It's an exciting thing to do, and we're going to do it, I think. I guess I should wait for the vote, but what I'm really excited about is you're absolutely right. We don't have that sport team that solidifies the community, that makes people get excited, you know? I mean, I see it around the world, that when the city's team is playing, the city is engaged, you know? It improves everybody's life, it improves everybody's feeling of community, and I can't wait for this to happen, because I think we're going to see that. I think it's going to be magnificent. It's going to be a different place because of what you bring, and it's far more than soccer that you'll be bringing. And thank you. You appeared magically when we needed you. So, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve NBQ.
Is there a second?
I second that.
And let's vote. Just the appointments. I get it. I'm going to reappoint, or I'm going to nominate some reappointments and new appointments to the commissions. If you want to, can I do them all at once?
Yeah, let me summarize them for you if you want, and then you guys can vote on all those, if that's okay?
That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay. And to the vote at once, Allison, they can vote them all at once?
We can do it by commission.
Okay. So, a couple of weeks ago, the mayor asked the commissioners who wanted to get engaged to respond to the clerk and acknowledge that fact. There are some that have resigned, there are some that want to stay. I'm going to read those out of the commission that's going to be there, and then you guys can appoint. So, for the Criminal Justice Commission, it remains the same. It's going to be Mark Brown, Howard Harris, Jen Herr, Jeff Little, Nicole McCracken, Andrew Mercy, and Rutger Parris for the Criminal Justice Commission.
It would be appropriate to take a motion to approve, oh, that would be your motion, Mr. Mayor, and then it would be appropriate for there to be a second and a vote on the Criminal Justice Commission.
I'll second the motion.
I got to make it first.
You made it already.
I made it already?
Yeah, with the nomination.
You did.
Fair enough. Works for me. Any speaker cards?
Done.
Any discussion? Let's vote. It's unanimous.
The next item is the Measure LC Oversight Committee. This is the Oversight Committee that oversees the Measure LC, which is a special tax that was passed two or three years ago. There is one vacancy on that commission. The commission will be, or the mayor is nominating for that commission, Devin Burden, Stephen Derryberry, Greg Tepe, James Vos, and Jeff Jaeger. There's one vacancy on that, and that's going to be filled with Greg Tepe.
Second.
I'll second. Go ahead.
I second that.
Let's vote. It passes unanimously.
The next commission is the Social Equity Commission. There are, I believe there are three vacancies. You're filling two this time. There will be one vacancy. The commission will be comprised of Lindy Williams, Yori Carter, Karen Davis, Christopher Deloche, Anook Glosson Harvey, and Jennifer Sanchez. And again, there's still one vacancy on that, but those six will be nominated by the mayor tonight.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Let's vote. It's unanimous.
For CA2, this is the Planning Commission. This has separate rules under the government code, so we'll take it up separately. This commission ends with the term of the mayor. There is one vacancy on this commission, and the mayor is recommending an appointment of Becky Loa for that position.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
It's unanimous.
CA3 is a nomination for the Lancaster Housing Authority. As you recall, the Lancaster Housing Authority used to be comprised of Cassandra Harvey, Kitty Zetto, and three of the council members. We are reverting, or we recommend, or the mayor is recommending reverting that back to the City Council as the members of the Housing Authority. So, the Housing Authority will be comprised of Marvin Crist, Lauren Hughes, Raj Molly, Ken Mann, and Rex Parris.
Is there a second?
Second that motion.
Let's vote. And it's unanimous.
And on CA4, there is no change at this time.
Thank you. Moving on to council reports. Any reports?
Marvin, did you want to speak about NCTC?
Yeah, it was a long day yesterday. I'll start with the sanitation district. The sanitation district asked us, again, for the seventh straight year, for a rate increase. We declined, the board declined. That's Catherine Berger, myself, and the mayor of Palmdale. So, we declined for our sanitation district, which is District 14. District 20 might have a, which is the Palmdale side, might have a rate increase. They do things a little differently, but that's what we had. At the NCTC meeting, we met with Highway Patrol, the Sheriff's Department, from Santa Clarita, Palmdale, and Lancaster, and they went through all their vacancies, and the city of Lancaster, I was surprised, doesn't quite match the city of Santa Clarita, because Santa Clarita has 100 vacancies that they're not filling. City of Lancaster has 70, and the city of Palmdale has close to 70. So, it's my understanding that you're putting something together with a supervisor, and it's coming?
That's correct.
So, then we moved on to Caltrans, and Caltrans, again, we changed their productivity schedule. Instead of closing the entire 27 miles of the 14 freeway in the new construction, we had them change it to four different sections, but we will have at least two lanes open in each direction for that entire time, which is a major difference. They closed it down to one lane, and then they closed it down. The off-ramps and on-ramps will be open, and they'll be scheduled on an individual basis, because they have to come up there and pave those. I think that's it for the Caltrans.
So, Mayor Parris, I just want to make sure this gets written into the record. Obviously, the 14 impacts the entire Antelope Valley, and if it wasn't for the vice mayor taking up the issue of Caltrans and the 14, they would not have stepped back and rethought their position about this next two and a half years of construction work. And again, you know, I sit with Marvin on that board, but it was his initiative that got Caltrans to rethink things, and they're now, again, they stepped back, maybe made a couple apologies, and then with that, they're going to keep two lanes open in each direction, and had he not intervened for 27 miles, there would be times when we were down to one lane. And we would endure that for close to two years. So, oftentimes, the public, they just, you know, they don't understand the leadership that often comes out of the council here, and I just want to make sure, because I haven't seen it in writing, and I've seen a lot of craziness on the social media, but again, if it wasn't for Marvin leading the charge and accepting nothing but excellence out of Caltrans, which I think is difficult, we would have the entire Antelope Valley enduring single lanes for close to two years. So, I just, I think that's critical.
Thank you.
I appreciate that, Ken. And then we moved on to Metro. We have a bill, it's called SB 125, and I always fight for this valley to get its fair share, and we're fighting a little bit harder and a little bit harder and a little bit harder. Metro has almost a half a billion dollars that was given to it by the state of California to divide up amongst the different operators within the Southern California area. Our share could be anywhere from seven to 11 million, and with our share, I was the only operator out of the 16 that there are in Southern California, and we wrote MetroLink, not MetroLink, Metro, a letter, and it asked for and demanded our share of that money. In their professionalism that they had, they sent a letter back that was equivalent to saying, your mother wears cowboy boots, and it was attacking AVTA. It was attacking the finances of AVTA, and the COVID money that we use at AVTA is allocated, and it's not spent, but at least it's allocated, and when we get the buses, then we can make the payments and do all that. So, that's why we're using it that way. And they made allegations that we weren't using our money correctly, as far as their defense for it. So, it's just another example of the downtown mentality, how they treat the valley and what they do. And then we moved on to MetroLink, and MetroLink, we advised them And then we moved on to Metrolink, and Metrolink, we advised them, because they're at their 30% construction for the new Metrolink station here, and we asked them to provide us with a hydrogen-powered engine and a hydrogen-powered fueling station rather than the diesel that would be here. So when they go back to the design, they're going to go back, and they're doing the testing to see if a hydrogen-powered engine will be able to go up the grades and do everything. But hopefully, we'll be able to get a hydrogen, and we put our names in there for that.
You might want to add that they're already testing a hydrogen train. It's not, it's not new stuff. I mean, they're moving in that direction anyway.
Right. They are. They're, they're testing for the, but we didn't have our name in the hat for it, and we have received $15 million in grants to build a hydrogen station here in Lancaster. So it was a good day for the Antelope Valley at the NCTC. It's a lot of controversy, but we do it. It's a long meeting. It's 34 hours.
I hated those meetings. Thank you for taking them over.
We had a medical main street meeting with the staff. Well, one thing I want to bring to your attention, Mayor Patterson, everybody else, that we're doing a medical main street around the hospital, and if we don't have a new hospital, you know, so we, we need to also try to figure something out about that.
Before I die, we will have a new hospital. I absolutely guarantee it.
That's, otherwise, medical main street, you know. So that's one thing I want to bring to everybody's attention.
And I'm 72, so you don't have to wait so long, okay?
So Councilman Mann and I had the opportunity to visit with Kaiser Permanente, and I just want to laud them for their good partnership and sponsorship in the past. They've been our partners with events such as Rock and Roll, and I'm excited for their upcoming resources fairs and their different plays that they have coming up in our schools. Councilman Molly and I attended the Citizens Advisory Committee meeting, and that's where we, as a community, come together, and we discuss different correctional programming at the California State Prison. They said that we're running out of space due to how much programming they have going on at the facility, and that's wonderful. One thing that I did want to highlight is that they're very happy with their partnership with the city, and they're also very happy with their partnership with the Antelope Valley College. So I'm happy to continue going to those meetings and, and report back to the council what, what they're doing and how we can get involved with that. I think we signed up for a tour, so that'll be interesting, and I'll let you know how that goes. I also have a Metrolink Board Workshop coming up in the next few days, so I will definitely bring up the hydrogen thing again and see what kind of research they plan on doing to get back to us.
Thank you.
Let's go back to your workshop. Can you ask them for their enforcement, their fair enforcement? Because we're looking at the fair enforcement of Metrolink, and on their, for the Antelope Valley line, they did 1,338 platform fair enforcements, and I think it's just contacts. But out of that, they wrote, for the entire year, five citations. So if they're going to have those contacts, and they do have the fair enforcement, we would like to see that things are being done.
Absolutely.
Everybody good? Okay. I got some stuff. It's been a busy week. But before I get to it, on the Planning Commission, there, there is someone else I'm going to be appointing to the Planning Commission, but he's running for council, so I have to wait. For two reasons. Could win. If he wins, then he can't be on the Planning Commission. The other reason, I, I get everybody's concern, but I will be doing that at the end of the election. I was at Lincoln School today, and it was at, you know, 7:00 in the morning. It was really terrific. We had a, they had a kindness thing for the kids, you know. It was just fun to be around the kids. But in talking to the principal and the vice principal and the, and the teachers, I asked them, I said, "What was, what's the one thing the city could help you with that would make a huge difference in, in the lives of these children?" And Lincoln is a very difficult school to teach at because of the high number of foster kids. You know, they're in and out, in and out. It's hard to develop a culture in the school and in the classrooms. It's, it's difficult. But what they said was parenting classes, you know. It doesn't take long, but, but parenting classes. And I, I remembered that, you know, when the kids were small, my wife and I took a parenting class at, at the Vineyard. Changed everything. I mean, I don't know that my kids would have got through college had I not taken that parenting class, because I was sure doing it wrong based upon what I learned in the parenting class. And so I'll be coming back to you, and I think that we ought to do a pilot project and see what impact it has, and I think it could only be positive, all right? The, one of the things I've been talking to the supervisor's office is, is about maybe changing the paradigm of how we do emergency medical care and making better use of ambulances, you know, where the ambulance comes with the paramedic, so we're not inundating the hospital. They, they get 300 patients a day. It's, you know, and most of them don't need the emergency room. They just don't have primary care. Maybe we have to change the model of how that is done. That would certainly be, be in conjunction with working with the fire department to do that. The, the other thing I want to talk about is, you know, we, I guess we are critical of the Sheriff's Department in that there's 70 people down, 70 sworn officers down. And the, but when you look at our crime rates compared to other cities, compared to where it was when we, when we were first, when the three of us were first elected, it's much lower than when we, we were elected, and that's because of them. They're, they're doing it with half the men, or 70 men down, and they're still doing the job, you know. It, it's, it would be amazing to see what they could do if they had a full complement of officers. But with 70 people down, they're still doing this unbelievable job. But how that translates to you is, with that many deputies down, is it sometimes takes a long time for them to answer a call. If it, if it's not somebody is in, in an emergent situation at that moment, it could take a long time, you know. The, the calls just keep stacking up. They're overworked, underappreciated, underpaid, and they're still able to do this amazing job. When you look at the statistics for the city, you, you, almost from the day you started, there's a precipitous drop, and we haven't even gotten the officers yet. We, we just have essentially, what do we call them, COs or? Right, you're going to report it, so they'll be able to tell you. And, you know, as we go into the elections, a lot of, a lot of people are just lying their butt off about what we do in this city. And when you look at the true stats, I, I don't know how the department does the job they do with the amount of hours they're having to work. It is, it is truly remarkable. An example of what they're facing, however, is the Sheriff's Department, in conjunction with Rod, raided this house after 20 neighbors showed up and said it was a drug house. The sheriffs bring up the SWAT team, they raid the house, and they're making ghost guns, literally making guns and giving them, selling them to criminals. The district attorney didn't charge them. They were out in less than 24 hours. I, I talked to the neighbors today, and it appears that they're back in business. I don't, I don't know how you guys do the job, if you have a district attorney that refuses to prosecute people for something that is so deadly. I mean, I, other than shooting somebody with those guns, you know, that's a pretty serious crime. Nothing. They let them go. If that doesn't change soon, I don't know where it ends. I know that we will be asking, we have to ask the DA, of all stupid things in the world, in order for our city attorney to prosecute misdemeanors, the LA County DA has to approve it. We'll be making that request, but I think we all know what he's going to say, you know, for some reason. Anyway, enough of my frustrations. That's all I have to say. Unless any of you have any questions about what we talked about. Good. Good. Thank you. City manager?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. You do have a couple videos that Mariposa Groundbreaking, the Steve Owen pickleball courts, and the ribbon cutting for the USLs. So we'll run those videos for you.
We appreciate you all being here today to celebrate the ribbon cutting of our alma mater hardcore project. This project has been in march for over a year, and it is very much a community-led project. We engaged with the pickleball players, the tennis players, and the community as a whole to decide what improvements we needed to make at this park, and specifically at the hardcore.
This is one part of a much bigger picture. What we're focusing on now is making this community a community where especially older people get, "You have to move. You have to get off that couch. You have to start living your life with motion." You know, and if we could just get everybody doing it, not only would they live longer, they would be healthier, and they would be happier.
Our sole mission is to get people out and get them active, which is right in line with, with where the mayor's trying to move Lancaster into that next 21st century group, right? More active seniors, more active everybody, and, and pickleball is, is just one way to do that, but it's a very exciting way to do it, as you hear. You don't hear that on the tennis courts, right? As you hear behind me. It's a very social game. It can be a very competitive game, but it's a very active game. All it requires is you to get through the gate. All you got to do is you show up through the gate. Somebody will help you, the alonia paddle, they'll teach you how to play, and so having the additional four courts means, obviously, we have double the capacity to play. That also means we're going to bring tournaments to the valley. Matter of fact, we have one upcoming to support the YMCA right here. It'll be the first tournament ever in Lancaster here at the new courts to support our, our neighbors, our partners over here. So very excited about that.
I would like to thank Communications for their editing abilities. I, I missed the ball about four or five times, so. I'm very appreciative.
The other one is the Mariposa, oh, there it goes, the Mariposa Park groundbreaking.
Time here in the city, and as you can see behind me, there's tons of kids playing and having fun. Right now, I'm at Mariposa Park, where local residents are getting excited for the many upcoming upgrades to the facilities and amenities.
It's an exciting time to be a resident here in the city as Lancaster continues to transform its public parks, one project at a time, enhancing the quality of life of residents while instilling a greater sense of civic pride. The latest project set to undergo a significant transformation is Mariposa Park, as City Council recently approved a $3.5 million makeover. The comprehensive upgrade encompasses a range of amenities aimed at enhancing the park experience for all local residents.
Some of the newest upgrades coming to Mariposa Park are picnic tables, barbecue grills, perfect for any summer outing, benches, and last but not least, a new playground.
With a focus on community input, the park improvement project aims to increase ADA accessibility within Mariposa Park while revitalizing amenities to meet the evolving needs of the residents.
Here's a Mariposa Park groundbreaking ceremony, and this ceremony is to kick off our construction for the park project, will be revitalizing and renovating the playground, picnic shelter, exercise equipment, new picnic tables, barbecues, LED lighting, and ADA accessible pathways for our community. We're really excited about the upgrades this will bring to our community and the engagement that our community will be able to have in the park following the upgrades. Special thank you to HUD for funding the project, as well as our California Parks and Recreation Department Prop 68 for funding the fitness and exercise equipment.
I love the partnership of doing it with the school district, and that, you know, it's never made sense to me that we have parks that are homeless camps during the day, you know. I mean, we build parks for kids and families, and that's what we're going to do. Going to redesign this park. It's going to be magnificent, and it's going to be directed at the kids that go to school here, and so they can use it during the day. And, you know, it's just a great partnership, and, you know, it's a significant investment, but, you know, if you don't have great parks, how can you be a great city?
The comprehensive overhaul extends beyond recreational features, encompassing the replacement of interior asphalt and concrete pathways, landscape and irrigation enhancements, and the installation of a new flagpole and site furniture. A new drainage system will be incorporated into the playground, contributing to the sustainability and resilience of the park's infrastructure. The commitment to community input, ADA accessibility, and array of upgraded amenities showcases the city of Lancaster's dedication to creating vibrant and inclusive public spaces that contribute to the overall well-being and enjoyment of its residents.
There's no better time to be a local resident here in the city than now, as the Park Makes Life Better program continues to transform public spaces, one park at a time. This has been Haco Bucarito, reporting for 28.
And last but not least, and I was expecting them to bring their flares and drums and everything today at the council meeting, but I think they're being a little more professional. The ribbon cutting for the USL offices.
Today is a great day for the Antelope Valley, because today we are celebrating the grand opening of the United Soccer League Antelope Valley Office.
I really appreciate the people of Lancaster, because ultimately, it was you who made this possible. This will be Antelope Valley's cue. Watch what happens. You know, we're going to be screaming and shouting and throwing things, and we're going to be acting like a bunch of Europeans. And we're going to love every second.
Busy week. It's been a busy few months, been a few years. Couple things too. Shout out to Parks again. There's a $2.4 million grant they just got awarded for a new park over by Avenue J area, interchange area. Community Center is doing a cleanup. The Moa and Cedar always have such fantastic exhibitions, and Oza Motley and Smokey and Me, a tribute to, Oza Motley's fantastic, by the way. Smokey and Me is a tribute to Smokey Robinson. Come join that. And then we also have a $5 million grant that we'll be announcing this week, if not next week, that Shannon and her team over in the community development area for mobile home rehabilitation. So the, those existing mobile home parks, and those, those citizens living in there have the opportunity to come and improve their facilities through a grant we received from the federal, I think it was the federal government, but it's going to be a great program for those folks in those neighborhoods. And then last but not least, I know, Mayor, it's not something you had to approve tonight, or it wasn't on the agenda, but you'd asked Chief to work on a safer shopping, so he's got a short presentation on the safer, Schaefer Shopping Program that you will be implementing, or he will be implementing. Chief? And then I'm done. We're done with Chief's done.
Actually. Actually, sir, we're going to tell you a little bit about that and just how we're looking, how, how things are going right now, so we're excited. There we go. So. There we go. So, you know, following COVID, you know, crime basically in going back to where it was, because all cities, just about everybody had a drop during COVID. And once COVID kind of settled, crime started to rise again and go back to numbers that were there pre-COVID. This obviously was really concerning because we got used to those low levels of crime. We, we in fact saw crime rising back here in our city, and it wasn't just because COVID had stopped, but we had other issues you mentioned earlier. We saw a decrease in officers on the street, or the, or the officers working for the Sheriff's Department. We saw an increase in individuals being released from prison, and homelessness increased in our area since 2018. We believe we saw a 30% increase in the number of homeless individuals that were here. But I'm happy to tell you that we are turning a corner and that for 2023, we saw a 4.32% decrease in crime. We are excited about that because it is really due to efforts that we and the Sheriff's Department are putting together as a partnership. And this came about while other cities that are policed by the Sheriff's Department and cities that we are familiar with saw increases. So, we feel like we are absolutely headed in the right direction, and we are expecting to see even greater decreases in crime.
Wait a minute, how many cities did you have up there?
So right now, we have, let me see, excluding us, what's that, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, I believe, if I'm counting that right?
And only two have had decreases.
The two that are on there, that's correct, sir, us and Malibu. There are other cities that have had decreases, but, you know, I wanted, we wanted to give you a look at cities that are familiar to us and that are, and are patrolled by the Sheriff's Department, some of the cities. We also put Pasadena and Long Beach on there because they're two cities that we're familiar with, and, and they saw, you know, increases in crime as well. You know, and I also like to mention that our crime has stayed below the state level of crime, and we are seeing a downward trend there as well, so we're really excited about that as well. And, you know, how, how did this come about? Well, I'll tell you right now, we're accomplishing it through changes and efforts that this council brought forward and said we needed to do. And that started with changing our stance on public safety. And it begins right here by saying, you know what, we're going to give our city our first police department to work alongside our brothers and sisters with the Sheriff's Department. And we're doing that. And what I love about our change in this department is that we're looking at it as community-led policing. We want to hear what the community needs, we want to hear how they, they want to be serviced. And that's important in today's age. You have to, you have to be community-inclusive now in law enforcement, and that's what we're doing here. Our community engagement has gone up dramatically, and we're, we're bringing a department that represents this hard-working, innovative city that we live in. We are serving our community. And when I talked about community-inclusive, I want you to know that we're starting, we started our hiring process of our peace officers, and we are including the community in that. We're going to be at least the first agency that I know of that is including, including a community panel in the selection of our officers, because we want to be sure we're giving a peace officer that the community wants and wants working here. You know, we, we line up alongside one of the greatest agencies, in my opinion, in the world, in the Sheriff's Department. And that's not just because I came from there, but I believe in the work they do. And so we want to bring a team that's going to work at that high level as well, along with them. We've brought our, our, our law enforcement technicians, which you mentioned earlier, and that's in, that's in paying attention to the fact that response times were up in the area, and we needed to come up with something to decrease those response times. You know what, I'm so happy to tell you that this incredible person tonight told me about a story where some of those lets came to her street and responded in a time that was unbelievable to her, and she applauded them. And that, that means the world to me, to hear that they're out there making a change, and they really and truly are reducing those response times. I hear it from Paul quite often, how effective those individuals are. So, we're giving, we're getting greater ability to address quality of life issues and public nuisance issues by increasing our parking and code enforcement technicians, try and deal with blight issues in the community, and clean up, clean up areas that need to be cleaned up. Our partnership with the Sheriff's Department is fantastic. Our communication is wonderful. We are addressing issues together, and we are constantly listening to what they need, and this council has been really good at providing things that not only are helping us, but are also helping the Sheriff's Department. And our new community liaisons, we're increasing the individuals that will go out and engage the homeless and find ways to clear our streets, clean our streets of homeless individuals. And that's, that's an increase of the folks that are going to be out there working and trying to address those issues. Neighborhood watch, and I have to thank Councilman Mann for his help with us in increasing neighborhood watch. I'm happy to tell you that we are plus 19 neighborhood watch groups right now, and those numbers are growing, because people are calling and saying, we want to be a part of this, we want to be a part of making our community safer. Business watch, 54 businesses are now participating in business watch. We had that many when we started, and that is growing. And that's, and part of that too, I, I will say is directly responsible to, because of this council and this city, starting something that I haven't seen, and it's a safer neighborhood program where we're working with neighborhoods to put flock cameras in their community. If they're willing to work with us and have a neighborhood watch, they have the opportunity to get a flock camera in their community, and that's, that's incredible. I haven't seen that anywhere else yet. Our crime prevention through environmental design continues to work very well, and we are imploring residents as well as businesses to contact us so that we can come through and help you make your homes and your property safer by letting you know the things you can do to make your property safer. Sir, at your request, we've just initiated our Safe Shopping Initiative, and that's because you have noticed that there are people who have concerns about shopping in our community, and we're going to do something about it. So we are working with the Sheriff's Department to increase patrols at these shopping centers, as well as working with the managers and everyone to give them advice and tips. We're even going to go as far as to survey the patrons and find out if there are things of concern, safety issues, that they want us to know about and address. So our traffic safety, we're, we're increasing traffic safety, we're working with the Sheriff's Department and our traffic unit to identify areas of concern and address those issues much better. I'm happy to tell you, and I learned this from Paul today, we're up 49% in DUI arrests, and that is really big and, and important, because we have to make our streets safer. We continue to address things like the many bikes and identify areas where speeding is a problem, and work with the Sheriff's Department to address that, and when our officers get here, they are going to assist with that as well. We continue to address.
I, I think that's remarkable, because we have a really high drunk driving issues out here.
Yes, sir.
The concern I have, we're only impounding cars when the person is drunk, right?
Well, in a drunk-driving stop, and if they're an unlicensed driver, they'll be impounded as well, correct, Paul?
Correct. Traditionally, if the vehicle could be parked and left as is, it would be left there. If it's safe to do so, if not, then it could be impounded behind the arrest.
What I'm asking, is it a rare event to take somebody's car simply because they don't have a license?
It depends on the scenario. It is rare, yeah.
It cannot be the policy of this city to make people unemployed.
Right.
Because they don't have a license.
Right.
And that is what happens if we take their car. Now, if there's other reasons to take their car, that's different. But if it's simply because they don't have a license, we're not doing that, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, good. Thank you.
And as, as I was saying, we continue to address public nuisance locations and do public nuisance abatement. We started that early on when we came here and learned about the Lancaster Inn and went to work on that. We've been identifying the legal after-hours clubs and address those because they will bring violence at times to the city, as well as we continue to work with residents and, and find out about, unfortunately, homeowners who decide they're going to turn their home into a nightclub and be a nuisance to the entire community. So we continue to address those and turn that around. So, and then finally, I'd like to just bring up the fact that you, you directed us to start our Digital Shield Initiative, and that is in full effect and going forward and having a positive effect on the issues in our community. The flock cameras, one of the best things ever, and this council brought those immediately at my request, and they are paying off in, in serious dividends on making our community safer. I went with Mr. Mann today and met with the hotelers, and we're looking at putting flock cameras on those hotel properties as well, to help us know if we have a person of concern in one, on, at one of their properties, or a vehicle of concern, I should say, at one of their properties. And then the gunshot detection, we just passed. I'm super excited about that because I, I think the most important thing that's going to come out of that is going to give us the ability to get help to victims so much faster. Now, the deputies will spend time searching an area because they are not sent directly, they're going off of a phone call. With that system, we'll be able to say, it is here, and get rescue and get the deputies there to deal with the issue and hopefully save lives in the process. So, and then we're wrapping it all up with AI and our hundreds of intersection cameras, they'll be connected with all of these technologies and, and fed into our Intelligence Crime Assessment Center, where we will have trained individuals monitoring what's going on within our city. We are already doing some of that with the resources that we have, and we're winning and identifying issues and staying on top of threats that come forth in our community. So, I'm hyper-excited. I, I think we're going to see even more drops in the coming months, and our partners over at the Sheriff's Department are a huge part of this, we're doing it together, sir, so we're excited.
Good.
Answer any questions at all, so.
So when is the Digital Shield fully op, full, in full operation?
So, it's, full operation is going to come when we move into our, our police station, which I didn't mention. We're going to have a new police station right there at the Antelope Valley High School District, building the old building. That's when it's going to be fully operational, because we will, we will have all the systems in place there. We are putting it together piece by piece now, and we just really need that structure for it to just be 100% go and have our people who are there monitoring what's going on with it.
Do you know what the, the arrest rate is for homicides in Lancaster?
Well, I, I gotta brag on that one, and actually, let me let Paul brag on that one.
So in regards to all of our homicides, we're 100% either a person named or in custody. And a lot of that is due to that, those great systems that we have in place now that the city has provided, the flock cameras have been instrumental in solving, or at least leading us to the right person or person of interest.
100%.
100%.
The national average is between 40 and 50. 100%. Anybody else have that?
I seriously doubt it. I, I haven't worked anywhere where you can say that.
We can't keep people from shooting each other. We just can't, right? But if you shoot somebody in Lancaster, that means we've caught every single person. Nobody has done that. That is truly remarkable. Where's 60 Minutes? Where's, where's Good Morning America? I mean, seriously, one city has 100% apprehension of every homicide.
Yes, sir.
You guys are incredible, and you get no credit. No, it, it.
Credit we get from this group and this community is all we need, so we appreciate that, sir. If I can go a little out of pace here for a second?
Sure. Are you kidding? You guys are our hero. You can do whatever you want.
Well, we got a hero. This is history. This is history, 51 years.
Yeah.
So, you know, in my opinion, she should be the chief.
Hey, do you want to be a reserve chief?
Can we compare sleeves?
That's the picture I want, yes.
No, have you noticed her sleeves? For, correct me if I'm wrong, but for every one of those stars, it's five years?
Yes.
Could you show the people at home?
What a night. Any questions, anybody? Nope? Okay.
Do we have a chief anymore?
Okay, a real public comment?
This is the time to address the City Council Agency Authority on non-adjourned matters. Speaker cards may be found on the back table of the council chambers. If you have completed a card, please ensure you have placed it in the basket so you may be recognized. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. Please keep in mind, state law prohibits the council from acting on items not on the agenda, and your matter may be referred to the city manager. Thank you.
Heather, do you want to come first? Wait a minute, aren't you running against me? I'm kidding, it's okay, you can talk.
Good evening, Mayor Paris and City Council. I'm here today to thank the city of Lancaster for your assistance with the special census tracts for the homeless count. This week, we started Monday at 6:00 AM with the support of your drone teams. I wanted to specifically thank drone program coordinator Timothy Bush and drone pilot Melissa Mitchell for going out with our special teams. They started yesterday morning at 6:00 AM. We've been able to really look at the very hard-to-reach areas in our service planning area, including some of the forests with the help, with the assistance of the drone program to fly over those areas that we can't drive to. I was privileged to be part of one of those teams and out with Timothy Bush. It was amazing to see kind of where the drones can go and what, what those can see. I also wanted to invite the city council and remind you that the pit count for the incorporated areas of Lancaster, or point-in-time count, is this Thursday at 6:00 AM. We'll be deploying out of Lancaster City Library, and that's when all of the incorporated areas of Lancaster will be counted. If anyone would like to volunteer, you can sign up at theycountwillyou.org, and that is all. Do I have any questions about the homeless count?
What's it look like?
I said, are there any questions that you have about the homeless count?
Yeah, what does it look like so far?
We don't have the numbers yet. The homeless count is running right now, and it's for the last 10 days of January, and then we will have the analysis after that. The entire service plan, or the entire county has to be counted 90% of the 90% of the count has to be done in three days, and the total count has to be done in 10 days. So it'll be, we'll know after January 31st.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're really going to get up that early and go... Why do you start at 6:00 in the morning?
For this area specifically, we have to count during the day. A lot of the dirt roads and areas like that, it has to be areas where we can see people sleeping in tents. We have a lot of underground encampments, those types of things that you really couldn't see if we did the count at night, like the rest of the county does. We start early so that we have enough time to cover the area. We're using all the daylight hours possible.
Okay. Thank you. David Paul.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, good evening. I heard a lot of good things tonight. I came tonight to talk about vision and genius. A friend of mine said that all genius is intuitive. People think that genius means being able to see things others can't, and it's all those things. But what I saw in this room tonight is why I love this city. Mayor, you know, I've talked before about the first time I met you, and it was right in that parking lot before the solar panel overhangs were there, and I got a distinct impression from you. But I have never finished the story completely because I saw in you the vision and the leadership that you possessed. And the universe imported on me an obligation to befriend and defend the genius in you that would come out to protect the city. So that's why I have a hard time complaining about the things that people can legitimately complain about, and I find myself defending the city more often than not. And I just want you to know that, you know, in the olden days, when we used to talk, you gave me one of the nicest compliments I've ever received. And we were talking about innovation, and you told me I was further out on the tip of the wave of innovation than anyone you've ever met who wasn't crazy. So I'll take that. I'll take that. But, you know, the vision I have for the future, and this has been the same since I arrived in this town 25 years ago, because I saw the potential and the last land available in Southern California and all these miraculous things. And I thought to myself, that's where I got the idea. We need a strong mayor system where the mayor actually controls the city, the schools, the libraries, and see what you can do. And these things will require leading into the future. You know, I want to start desalinating water because I don't think there's anybody in here. There's a lot of experts in all this. People do things. But no one can tell me that Southern California will have enough water to support all the growth we want to make happen. So we have to desalinate. That's the future. That's 20 years of investment, mortgage-paying jobs, and leading into the future. And perhaps we may be able to even dig a canal in there too to support the getting our hydrogen to the ocean. So, these are the things that need to happen. We need to get some water that we can sell. We need to divorce LA County, and we need to start talking seriously about forming a new county. And these are the things that I see in the future. I know too soon is the same as too late. But the future is going to come, and I want to push some big, bold ideas. Strong mayor, water, and forming our own county so that we... I watched the debates for the LA District Attorney. We need to have our own county and our own district attorney. Thank you.
Thank you. Fran, what do you have to say for yourself?
Wow. What a meeting. It has been so filling with so many good things. I came with an agenda of my own, but of what I wanted to speak to you about. But the soccer team feels it's going to be tremendous for the city. And that, it just happens, this morning, I was, well, I don't sit and watch the TV, but I'm doing whatever I do, and I have the TV on. But the soccer team, there was on the news, I can't remember what team it was. Anyway, my point is, they're teaching youngsters to start to play soccer at the age of four years old. And they are loving it. They're four, five, six, they show four, five, six, and seven-year-olds learning to kick that ball and play soccer. So I can see that there's a big advantage here for this community because we do need things for our youngsters to do. I also wanted to, what else did I want? I've got a bunch of notes here. But that's one of the things. And then I wanted to bring up, I'm sorry. I don't have them in chronological order because I was just writing them as we were talking. I got my thoughts together here. Okay.
Fran, is it coming up?
Birthday?
Yep, it's coming up. I'm 81 years old strong. I am so happy about that. I thank God that he has given me the graces, the privileges that he has given me. And to be in this city and doing what I do, you know, on my, you know, what I do on the sidelines for this community, I feel really thankful. And I thank you all too for allowing me to do this and allowing for us to have such a great community to do it for. I also wanted to change the subject a little bit here. As far as the parenting, the school parenting program, I think that is a terrific idea because a lot of parents, as you yourself said, Mayor... Oh, you know what? I didn't say hello to all of you yet. Oh, anyway, it's very important to teach the parents to be parents and teach the parents to teach their children how to be students. And if I may say so, I've got a lot of stuff to say, but I wanted to bring up something that's really important that happened here in our community. There is a homeless person that needs dire help. Okay, real quick. Anyway, he's actually right now on the corner of Jay and Challenger Way, next to the dental health, the western dental building. But he can't walk. He can't get up. A friend of mine went by there and thought that because he needed shoes, she went and bought him shoes and gave him some socks, since another friend went over and gave him some hamburgers, but he can't move. And we have called, I've called LASSA, I've called Grace Resources, and nobody wants to help. Nobody, they're not doing outreach anymore. So where do we go?
Nicole, is this...
I'm sorry?
I'm talking to Nicole. Do you know about this?
I no longer work in homeless services, but I have heard of this individual, and I know that outreach teams have gone to help.
Who?
I couldn't hear you.
She said she knows of the individual and that they believe teams have gone to help.
Oh, they have?
Okay.
Okay, I'll talk, I may talk to you later about that. So that's good because even the Salvation Army, we called a lot of different places, and it's kind of discouraging, you know, to see this poor man. And I know we have a lot of homeless, and this, you know, this is just one.
Fran, you know, I want it to be clear. We want to do everything we can for people who are legitimately homeless. But people who have been released to the prisons, who want to stay drug addicts and don't want to work and want to rob, rape, and pillage in the community, I want those people gone, and I don't want to help them. I want to help the people that need the help.
That's right, yeah.
And it's important for us to keep that in mind, that we are making the distinction. Just because you're not in a home doesn't mean you get to break the law.
Right, right, right. I agree. Yes, I agree with that.
But a person like this, we absolutely want to help.
Okay, because, you know, it hurt me because, I mean, if I could, I'd get in a car and go pick him up and take him to the hospital, take him wherever. But then there's complications in there if I do it or, you know, the public is... Pardon?
Not a good idea.
Not a good, right. No, but he does need help.
We've got an incredibly competent fire department with paramedics that...
So, okay, well, I thought I'd bring it up, and I'm glad that Heather has some information for me so we can follow through with it. And I thank you again very, very much from the bottom of my heart, and I do have a big one.
Thank you.
But no, that's kidding aside, of course. That's a pun. I really appreciate living here, and you don't, it's not time to take a nap yet.
Thank you, Fran.
I wasn't yawning. I was letting you, I was going to wish you happy birthday.
I saw him. He was yawning.
Well, thank you again very, very much, and God bless you all, and God bless America.
Thank you. Okay. David, thank you for your comments about vision and things of that nature. I think it's important to recognize that if I didn't have this council, we wouldn't get much done at all. If I didn't have a staff that just steps up to whatever it is, whatever it is, they take it on, and before I know it, it's done. I get to take the credit for all of that. I don't know that it's necessarily appropriate that I do, but that's the truth of it. But thank you. Moving on. Any other comments? The City Council will now move to close session to discuss closed-session items, 1 through 32. We're going to really talk about all of them?
No.
Oh, good. Oh, good.
In closed session, the council took up closed session agenda items 1 and 30 and gave direction to staff and legal counsel. No reportable action.
Thank you. The next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, February 13, 2024 at 5:00 PM. The meeting is adjourned. Carol, my day is done and I'm coming home.